...in the pledge of allegiance, I'd like to ask for Father Tommy Dwyer if he would say a prayer for us.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Lord, I lift up this commission meeting to you. We lift up the commission, we ask you to lead them, to guide them, to help them be the best representatives of your people that they possibly can be. Watch over all that they do, that they would be led to biased decisions for the betterment of this community. In Christ's name we pray, amen.
Amen. And I call this meeting in Port St. Joe City Commission's order. First order, Ben Stiller. Commissioner Ashbrook will be just a little bit late, but he will be here. We have the regular commission meeting from nine five seventeen. We have an emergency meeting on nine seven seventeen, and a special meeting on nine fourteen seventeen. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved, Mayor.
I have a motion by Commissioner Thursby. Second by Commissioner Bezette. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes four eight. Port St. Joe Developmental Agency, is there any issue? You want to report?
No, nothing new there.
Nothing bad? Alright, uh, see your attorney.
Yes, Mayor, um, as you know, at the last meeting, the board directed me to go ahead and extend, red ordinance extending the medical marijuana dispensary moratorium. At this time, I'd like to have, call for a public discussion, and then for a vote for first reading in to advertise.
Alright, anyone in the public wish to discuss the moratorium we're putting on the medical marijuana dispensers? Anyone? We're putting a twelve month moratorium on. Alright, so I got a motion from Commissioner Lowry, second from Commissioner Bezette. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four eight.
Ordinance number five forty-three, an ordinance of the city of Port St. Joe, Florida, amending ordinance five twenty-nine by extending the temporary moratorium on the operation of medical marijuana treatment centers and licensed dispensing organizations within the city of Port St. Joe for an additional period of twelve months unless rescinded or extended by a subsequent ordinance or by a subsequent amendment to the city's land development regulations regarding the regulation of marijuana treatment centers and licensed dispensing organizations providing for conflict, separability, and immediate effective date.
Alright. Need to, uh, bring some motion to adopt that?
No, no, it's not be advertised.
Advertize, alright.
And I have one other issue that came up just the other day, um, that I just needed some direction from the board. And that was, back in two thousand and twelve, um, there was a, when I was the special magistrate of the city of Port St. Joe, there was an order and imposition of a fine placed on Hazel Marine Nagel, thirteen oh three McClellan Avenue. That lien is in the amount of three thousand two hundred and sixty-eight dollars and eighteen cents. I just received a letter from a friend of Ms. Nagel's who, um, is wanting to help her out. And there's also a tax deed certificate on the property, and the pla- and the property's going up for auction on Oc- on October eleventh. This friend of Ms. Nagel's would like to, she contacted me to see if we could work on how that amount of our lien was to pay off, the, uh, the taxes, pay us off. And there's also a problem, Mr. Creel, our building inspector, just now put, um, declared that that building is uninhabitable. And this could be a way, her, the friend that I was talking to basically said that her plan is to get it paid off and then get the building torn down. And I think this is a way that we could, um, make a few bucks and get a problem taken care of as well. And what I'm asking for is just, um, if you'd just give me the discretion to go ahead and deal with this matter the best way that I can for the city without having to come back to the board, so I can do, because there's not really a lot of time, and I need to be able to negotiate this with her. And, um, it's probably gonna involve just giving her a little bit of a break on the city, on the lien that we have and the amount of thirty-two hundred dollars, but in so doing, we can also alleviate a problem that we have on McClellan Avenue as well.
Is she going to be able to, uh, pay off her, uh, property tax lien also if we give her some help so she won't lose her property?
Um, well, from what I understand is, Ms. Nagel has some serious health problems, and she's going to lose this property anyway. What her friend is trying to do is, the property, the lot is worth some money, there's a forty-two hundred dollar tax lien on it, and we also owe thirty-two hundred dollars. And if she, she's just trying to get that taken care of, have the, the property and then sell it, and maybe Ms. Nagel can recover some money and she can get her money back. She's just trying to help her out. I think it's an opportunity for us to kill two birds with one stone.
So you're just asking us to negotiate?
I'm just asking you to let, give me the power to go ahead and do it.
Uh, I'm fine if the...
The question I have, and I'm not familiar with this at all, the question I have though, is it not so that the property could be sold, uh, if it did auction off? But then, once it was auctioned off, the taxes and what we're owed would be paid to us, or?
Depending on how, how much it's sold for. We're definitely behind the tax lien in terms of priority. Tax lien takes priority over us. But, that's, I, I'm gonna be work, I'm gonna try and work out a deal with her. I'm, I might find that that's the correct thing to do, is just let it go to auction, but I'd als- that also, you know, we're not guaranteed whoever's gonna buy it's gonna take care of it right away either, and that's, that's what I'm trying to work out.
Uh, I, I do know that this particular property has been assailed from the neighbors quite a while. And I even talked with Ms. Nagel last week, and she has come out some very serious health issues. And, and, and I talked with her about it, and, you know, I told her I didn't know what to say other than, you know, sell the property, get, try to get some money out of it, you know, and pay off all that stuff. You're not leaving it in no way, it's unlivable, and she just didn't know what to do.
She's not living in the house.
No, the house is, is basically uninhabitable.
Yeah. The house is way out of control.
Yeah, I'm definitely for helping anybody that we can, I just, I'm not familiar with this. What, what address did you say that was?
Thirteen oh three McClellan.
Well, if it's the wish of the board, and then I'm gonna go with the wish of the board too, let's try to help any way we can.
I'm fine with that, I'll make a motion, Attorney and, uh, Mr. Anderson handle it.
We have a motion from Commissioner Lowry.
Second.
Second for discussion.
What are we doing?
Sorry.
It's plain move.
Just real quick.
Back in two thousand and twelve, we had a case when I was the, the special magistrate, where we placed a lien on a, a piece of property for not coming in compliance. They eventually did, but in the meantime, three thousand two hundred dollar approximate lien accrued on it. That's been sitting there for the last five years. There's a tax, a tax deed has been issued and it's going up for auction on October eleventh. A friend of the lady, Ms. Nagel, approached me and asked for some help. Her plan is to go ahead and, and she's asking us to work with her on the amount of the world, pay off the tax lien, pay us off, and then go ahead and get the property and tear down that building and sell it. Sell the lot, that's what, that's what her plan is.
Second stance.
Alright, second stand, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five eight, alright.
Thank you, gentlemen, that's all I have.
Alright, Jim?
Yes, sir, Mayor, the first item I have is a reference to the city non-departmental contribution fund. Uh, to date, we have collected a hundred and forty-seven dollars in that fund. So, at this point, we need to have a discussion on there, how we wanna move forward on it, and what we wanna utilize that money for.
I, I was the one, of course, uh, encouraged the, uh, commission to try this as a way to, uh, fund some of our non-departmental, uh, senior citizens, humane society, library, someone so forth, uh, through contributions, basically, uh, when somebody pays a utility billing at a dollar, at fifty cents, five dollars, whatever. It hasn't worked, obviously. Been almost a year, and we've collected a hundred and forty-seven dollars, I'm disappointed, but, uh, it's, it's another county situation that the staff has to deal with, and, uh, I'd just make recommend, uh, recommendation that we do away with it and just say, it's a good thing we tried, it didn't work.
I'm fine with that, Commissioner Bezette, but somebody's gotta be giving this hundred and forty-seven dollars, is that what I'm understanding?
Yes, sir.
How many, how many of the agencies are there? Uh, or?
I know we have the Humane Society, we contribute to the, uh, library, we have the, uh, uh, Early Learning Coalition, what's the others?
Senior Citizens.
Senior Citizens.
A R C Transportation.
Uh, I don't know if y'all, how y'all wanna do it, I just think divide it up and give them all equal amounts, or unless somebody's got a better idea.
It's unfair, well, yeah.
It's not a lot of money.
I'll make that motion, just divide it up between all the non-governmental agencies.
Yeah, I'll second that.
We have a motion, Commissioner Ashbrook, the second, Commissioner Thursby, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five eight.
Alright, on to new business, first item we have tonight is speed bumps on Sixth and Seventh Street. Commissioner Thursby, wanna talk to you tonight about it?
Yeah, guys, I know sometimes that, uh, speed bumps are not the hottest topic in town, but, uh, ever since I've gotten on the board, I've had a lot of issues with, a lot of issues with people coming to me that live in the Seventh Street area between the convenience store, which would be, I guess, Highway ninety-eight and Long Avenue in between there, and then on Sixth Street between, uh, Comflor Funeral Home and the bank. There's actually the bank, the telephone company, Family Dollar across the street, uh, at one time, they even had the, uh, trailer out there that showed the speed. And from, uh, in one block, there was speeds clocked up to forty miles an hour down that road to get to the bank before the bank closed. Or to get to the dollar store before they closed, or opened, or what have you. I've spoke with this, I've put it off for a long time, I kept waiting for Commissioner Macron to get off the board. I probably wouldn't have brought this up tonight if I'd have known he was gonna be here, 'cause he never was with me on this, but, uh, anyhow, uh, I would like to move forward, and, uh, and I don't mean the big ones, I mean just some simple, small speed bumps. Oh, and, you know, and I also wanna say this, guys, if it doesn't work and it becomes a nuisance, we, we can always pull them up. And if you need me to, I can bring every neighbor off both of these streets, if all agreed to come, if need be. I told them to let me, uh, test the waters first, and, uh, I, I'd like to move forward with a motion tonight, let's sma- try some small speed bumps on these two streets.
I think I mentioned before how I feel about speed bumps, but I think that my concern is that if people don't know that they're there and they're used to doing what they're doing, which is wrong, uh, that they might tear up their vehicle. If, if we're going to do anything like this, there needs to be ample notice, you know, by signage or a flashing yellow light saying, "Hey, you're gonna tear your car up." Uh, I just, I don't know about the liability of it, if we could get some low-profile ones, um, with some adequate signage, I would be more apt to support it.
And I'm fine with that, I mean, if we can do that, I don't know, uh, this is the first time I've ever brought up, 'cause I've got mixed emotions about speed bumps myself. But, I'm also got very strong feelings about children and people's pets getting run over, people's cars getting hit, and there's no reason, any time, for somebody to drive thirty and forty miles an hour on a side street. And I've seen it. I'll put that in the form of a motion, eh, with adequate signage, and maybe, uh, articles, a couple articles in the paper letting people know, coming, this is coming, thirty days out.
Is there enough room, I mean, between stop signs, where, where were you thinking?
I was gonna leave that up to Public Works and let them, I have discussed it with John in the past, and as of recently, and just leave it up to him and the police chief to look at it, and we'll see where it goes.
Alright, so you put that in the form of a motion?
Yes, sir.
You got a motion from Commissioner Thursby, and we have a second?
I'll second for discussion.
Second for discussion, Commissioner Lowry.
Uh, I, I don't, I don't think I can support it, those, those two roads are heavily, you got a lot of heavy traffic there. That, that's, and that's probably my biggest issue, between the two convenience stores, um, I don't feel like, I mean, we can get it out there and, and with more public discussion and maybe a workshop, but it's just, it's too much heavy traffic in that area for me to support that. But I'll tell you, I'm, I'm all about safety, I can tell you that, uh, and I, I understand where you're coming from.
Can we maybe look at locations and bring this back? I mean, I'm, I'm trying to picture in my head where the stop signs are at along Sixth and Seventh Street.
Yeah, we can do that, and I'll rescind it, but I'm gonna tell you, we wait two weeks, and a kid gets run over, unless I've got somebody else up here, and y'all think I got other votes than you two guys, uh, it's gonna be on y'all and not me.
Commissioner, I, I hate that you feel that way, because that's not, uh, that's not where I'm going with that, I, I, I'm all about safety. For several years, there's never been speed bumps there.
And the reason you said it was highly trafficked area, uh, picked yourself living on that road?
I, I understand, and, and maybe the, the chief can help us out there, as far as patrol, but, uh, um, I'm just letting you know I can support it.
Commissioner Thursby, uh, the, the short run on Seventh Street, and I was looking at Seventh Street recently, and, uh, we have a lot of bad roads in the city, and that happens to be one of them.
It is.
It's not a great road, and, uh, I don't see how cars speed down it even.
I don't, I would think that that would work itself, but it doesn't.
And now Sixth Street, that's a longer run, from, from Long to Woodward, that's a longer run, I could, I could support maybe some, something there, but Seventh, I would think, it wouldn't be necessary.
There's nothing between Long and Woodward stop sign wise?
Excuse me?
There's nothing between Long and Woodward stop sign on Sixth?
Uh-uh, Sixth, that's correct.
Seventh, yeah.
Well, if we can...
Any one of them got a stop sign?
Okay.
Miss, uh, Mr. Mayor, you, you wanna tell me how you feel, since we're all discussing this?
Well, you know, I brought it up before about doing this, maybe a couple years ago, so I don't remember exactly, on Eighth Street.
Mm-hmm.
I was shot down then, they didn't like speed bumps. Uh, and I was appraised by a guy on that street that had passing children, you know, playing his yard and all, and then the ball may roll out in the street, and afraid that the kids will get run over because everybody's going too fast to stop. But I, I'm all about safety too with the speed bumps. I think we need them in some areas, uh...
I tell you, I'd like to do this, then. Let's, uh, make a motion, I'll make the motion to...
Let me go ahead and draw.
He'll draw his second.
I'll draw in a second.
Alright, nevermind.
Alright, and I'm gonna amend my motion to read that we'll put speed bumps on Sixth Street, and then, uh, we can bring back Seventh Street, uh, in two weeks, and I'll just let the neighbors on Sixth Street, uh, Seventh Street come and voice their concerns.
In Sixth Street, you're only going from Long to Woodward?
Right.
From Long to Woodward?
Long to Woodward.
That's your motion?
That's my motion.
Alright, we got a motion, Commissioner Thursby, have a second?
I'll second for discussion, for discussion.
I'll second from Commissioner Ashbrook for more discussion.
Well, Public Works isn't here. Uh, as far as options on speed bumps, are they lower profile? I mean, I don't want people's heads hitting the top of their cars if they're driving over at thirty-five miles an hour and tearing up their bumpers, uh, but they don't need to be doing that in the first place. Do they make low-profile speed bumps?
Are you asking me?
I'm, I'm looking at anyone with an answer, I don't know the answer to that question.
Looks like an answer to anybody.
Well, I don't, I don't know that I got the answer you want. Um, my answer is I have no idea.
Okay.
I mean, I'm, I would ask John to look into speed bumps and give you some ideas, 'cause my personal opinion is they're a bad idea. Uh, it doesn't, it doesn't matter to me if they're this tall, this tall, we're gonna get complaints.
How you slow people down, chief, when they won't slow down?
You have to go out.
We can write, we can write a bunch of tickets.
Another way to slow them down?
But, but the people that are gonna show up and complain, I guarantee you, half of them gonna be the ones getting the tickets.
Yeah.
Well, that's why we're having this discussion, right, and it really is.
I, Ms. Garcia, who lives one house behind the express lane, she called, Jake Richards sat there for almost a week, in the morning and evening, and literally, cars looked like they're going fast, I'm not, and I'm not saying they're not going fast, but there was only two weeks to stop, and he sat there and ran radar, I know, forty hours, in a, probably a ten-day period.
And that all may be...
Did you see where they could see him?
Probably, and that's why, and that's why...
Yeah, and that's why they don't speed, you leave a cop car on every road in Port St. Joe, and nobody's gonna ever speed on it. How many cop cars can we buy, and how many police can we hire? I mean, come on. No brain.
I, I would suggest, get, get Mr. Grantland to give you an idea on some speed bumps, and then discuss it again.
I, I'd rather give it a couple of weeks, so we talk to John, talk to others, Commissioner Thursby, that's kind of where I...
Well, my motion can die for lack of a second, but just everybody remember this, we've never adopted Robert's rule of law, and I will bring it back up in two weeks.
I'll withdraw my second, and let's, let's please bring it back up in two weeks, and hopefully John, uh, Jim, can you instruct John to come back with some different ideas of what we can put there?
Alright, the next item we have is in reference to delineators at Highway ninety-eight and Third Street. Mayor Patterson, wanna talk to you tonight about it?
Yes, you know, we, we've talked about those things before, and, you know, the one to put them up at Hungry Highway, you want to put them up down there at George Gurns, turn in at McDonald's. And just the other day, I saw we had one or two right there at Third Street, and I didn't know exactly what they were for, so I called and found out somebody had been running over the culvert, is that what they're doing?
That's what we were into, yeah.
And, and that the state or somebody could put those up to keep them from running over the culvert. I mean, you know, if it's, if it's a safety issue then, we gotta have it, I'd rather have a camera than find out who's running over it and, and make them pay for it, to be honest with you, but I like to see that. I mean, if any of these, who are running over, run over more than once.
I think it's the big trucks turning in to service some of the businesses.
Might have been waste product, uh, Chesty, you have any idea about any of those waste product trucks?
You can't blame everything on waste product.
Good answer, Chest.
But, I mean, you know, if it's the wish of the board to leave those up for a while, I, I'm not gonna wanna leave them up forever. I do think they distract from the beauty of the city.
I agree with you.
But, I mean, I can live with them for a little while, and, and sooner or later, I think we need to ask them to take them down, I mean, that's okay with us.
It's really, it's not a, it's not there for s- safety purposes.
Is there to prevent things from getting broken?
Prevent them from having to fix it.
Yeah, and, I mean, you know, really, if you wanna do it for safety purposes, they're McDonald's and Hungry Highway, so you really gotta say, but people still turn across that W L line, I don't care what you say, they gonna turn across them.
Yeah, yeah.
And, uh, any place, that's illegal to do, but...
I think they'll ask them to take them out.
And he said he would, if, if it's wish, it's wish.
Put that in the motion?
We need it.
We need it to get them to take it out?
Y'all wanna take it down, we'll get them to take them down. He said he would.
What does everybody else feel?
I have no feelings either way on that one, Mayor, I mean, it doesn't look great.
Leave on them down?
Doesn't look that good.
I'll make a motion to take them down.
I've got a motion, Thursday, second from Commissioner Bezette, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, alright, they coming down.
Uh, the next item we have on there tonight is city charter revision discussion, Commissioner Thursby, wanna talk to you tonight about it?
Uh, can we back up just a moment?
Yes, sir, we can.
Can we back up just a moment?
Yes, sir.
Uh, we did have on here Entertainment District tonight that I asked to be taken off, and I'd just like to explain, but I noticed a lot of people here were caused of that tonight. The only reason I was putting this on here was to set up a workshop, because somebody had come to me with this plan, and I did not like the plan, I spoke with the county commissioner, told him I didn't like the plan, that I couldn't live with that plan, and I told this person that, and, uh, they asked me to take it off the agenda until they could work on their plan a little more. Now, I'll just go ahead and say for the record, that the first thing I ever heard about anything about alcohol beverages on, on, on side streets was from a restaurant owner, they wanted to know simply, could his restaurant people that had to wait, and they had an hour waiting on, sit right outside their place and have a beer, or whatever. And then the next thing I know, we got a whole district coming up. But that's not what I, what was, I heard to start with, and I don't know where the whole district came from, but, you know, I can't support it. But, there's not gonna be anything about it said tonight as far as commission goes, uh, this person is planning to bring us something back at the first meeting in, uh, October, for us to look at, but, uh, the more I think about it, and the more I realize what somebody asked me to do, this is not what I was asked that they wanted done, not just walking up and down the street and cross Highway ninety-eight, all the way through our parks where our children are playing, which they went to turn liquor drinks, or beer drinks, whatever it might be. That's not what I had in mind when somebody asked me, and when, again, when this person come to me and told me that, I said, "What? This is not gonna happen the way you got it, I can tell you that right now." And I told him my thoughts about, you know, just I thought people wanted to sit outside his establishment and just have a beer while they waited to go in and sit down. So, how it got to the other part, I'm not sure, but I put a stop to it right away. And if anybody here does wanna address this tonight, since you're here, and you thought it was a real agenda, I will, you know, keep it to a minimum, please, 'cause nothing's gonna be voted on, nothing's ever been presented to us as the board, and as I say, the first plans I saw, immediately I totally got, no way. So, if there is anyone who'd like to speak, please raise your hand.
Mr. Mayor, could I speak to that one time real quick?
Just one more, yes, sir.
I just wanna say that I, I feel just like the mayor does, I've actually spoke to several people in the community on, uh, and I knew Phil was gonna be calling me on this, and, and when I found out, because Phil told me more than I knew about it, uh, the first thing that I knew is, is just what you said, that people are gonna sit outside while they wait, and when this was brought to me six or eight months ago, I even said as far as, "Yeah, we need to have a red solo cup or something so that we're not advertising what we're doing." Never no glass, never anything, just right in front of the business, and I said I might could go with that. I don't know how it's got construed as far as it has, but we've gotta workshop this and listen to the people of our community.
Oh, yeah.
Can I say something, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I, I was presenting the plan, uh, this past week, and probably, it was based, based on a map, and I wasn't for it from the beginning. I told them, if, if there were some changes made, there might be some support, but we needed to hear from all sides of our community. And, but, two hours later, I started getting phone calls with people against it, and, and I, I said, "Hold on, let's, let's slow down," and, and because apparently, uh, word on the street was, there was already five votes for it. And I can tell you, I'm not for that, so, uh, I would, I'd like to hear from the public, um, just because I know everybody's here.
Yeah. Yes, sir, you were first, I'm gonna state your name, please, and the address.
James Wiley, and I'm here representing the Port St. Joe Ministerial Association at large, so, uh, every address of each church in town is the address I would use.
Alright.
Uh, and, and really, I'm encouraged by what you guys have said tonight in regard to your opinion about, you know, this, this potential proposal. And, um, I, I did hear that it was going to be dropped from the agenda tonight, but I thought, you know, I'm, I'm just gonna show up anyway. Uh, in our ministerial association meeting this morning, we discussed it, and I'll just read, to keep it brief, this is what I had sent to them as, as an announcement for our meeting this morning, that there was a disturbing development in rezoning laws in our community. Uh, there's a proposal, potential proposal now, uh, to open all of the area from, I believe it was Sunset Coastal Grill to the Marina, uh, including Reed Avenue, and so that's a pretty extensive area. Uh, proposal to open all of downtown as an open container zone. Um, I had said to the ministers, apart from enticing more people to Port St. Joe, whose purpose is to engage in a more party-like atmosphere, uh, there's no good reason to expand the areas already designated for alcohol consumption, which essentially are the businesses that sell alcohol. And I went on to say, uh, other communities that have embraced this method of, quote, drawing more business, have lost their family-friendly status, which I know we do not want to lose our family-friendly status. Even in our Chamber of Commerce mission statement, I think three times, it states that we are family-friendly, and we really wanna keep it that way. Uh, and what it has done is increased the level of crime and delinquent behavior. Along those lines, I went on to look at some other communities that have embraced an open container zone. Uh, one was in Cincinnati, Ohio, it's called the Bill Street Management Area, and John Shivers is the director for that, and he was kind of defending it, but he said that really the only noticeable difference that he had seen is public drunkenness and fighting. Other than that, there was really no change. And, and I thought, well, he just indicted himself in this whole idea of the, of the benefit of an o- open containment, uh, container zone. So, uh, just to go on record even before, and maybe to squelch, you know, this idea, uh, the Port St. Joe Ministerial Association was unanimous this morning in our meeting in opposition to that, and I know that we, we would not be in favor, we don't see the benefit to our community, community at all. Uh, I think we ought to maybe look at Branson, Missouri, and see how successful they've become, and they are family-friendly, and there is no open container, uh, zone there, so, uh, thank you for your time, and I will keep it brief.
Yes, sir. Anyone else? Anyone else? We thank you all for coming tonight, and believe us, we gonna do the right thing up here.
You wanna say the workshop, Mayor?
Will.
Oh, we're not, you have to be... Sound like a...
Well, I can, anytime, you know, let's, let's do it as it were.
Do we need to?
Yeah, let's set one, and then we'll...
I agree, do y'all know, has, has anybody talked to the guy to see what kinda tweaking he might be able to do to bring back the rest of the timeline on that?
We'll workshop up until after our next first meeting in October.
Okay. Okay.
And then set a workshop, but we gonna set it now for the day we wanna set it for.
Last I spoke to him, he was, he was taking all the parks out, and, and until he did that, he wasn't really prepared to come and present anything, because he was redrawing all the lines.
That's why we need a workshop.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Y'all set it, and I'll be there.
I'd like to go ahead and set it so that people know when it is. First meeting is the third.
About the second week of October.
I will be out of town the ninth to thirteenth of October.
What about before tonight?
I could do, I could do it on the fifth.
That'd work.
What day is that?
Thursday the fifth.
Thursday the fifth, at what time? Six, so everybody can, you know, be here at six o'clock?
That's fine with me.
Alright. And what date is that?
October fifth.
First Thursday in October.
Alright, first Thursday in October, we will have a workshop on this. I'd love to see everybody there, want everybody's opinion, want to make sure we doing the right thing by listening to you. And believe me, we know what the right thing is, this board, we know.
Would that be in this?
That would be right here.
Be right here, and thank y'all too for everybody coming.
Come on up. Six o'clock. Come on up, yes, ma'am.
Mary Lucumbi, White City. The, the only thing that I wanted to say, and I appreciate so much what Brother James said on behalf of the Ministerial Association in this area. But I wanted you to hear us say that we pray for y'all. I know at our church, and I'm sure that we're not the only ones at Lighthouse, and our, my pastors are here with us today, and several of our church members. Y'all have a huge responsibility, and I know all of you, I don't know Mr. Ashbrook as well. And it's a trust, and I know that is huge, and especially when you have fifty different people, and everybody has their own agenda, and everybody wants you to do something, you know, that satisfies what they want, and I understand that it's very, very difficult. But I want you to know that we pray for y'all, and we, and we don't just pray for, um, the people that represent us, and, and we're not even in technically the city of White City. But when we pray, we ask God to give you wisdom to make the decisions that would lead this community in the way that would be a blessing and that God would be pleased with. And, um, and you probably don't always hear those compliments, but I want you to know that we do appreciate what you do, and we appreciate the sacrifice. Because if nobody has ever been in politics, they don't know what it's like. It's easy to sit in a chair and throw stones, but it's very difficult when you're in the public eye. And, um, I just want you to know that we appreciate you, and just to know that we're praying that God would direct you in the decisions that you make. God bless each one.
Thank you.
We thank you. Alright, no one else wish to speak, we'll, we'll move on.
Yes, sir. Back to city charter revision discussion, Commissioner Thursday.
Um, guys, this is nothing to vote on tonight, but when the city charter is changed, uh, it's gotta be put in front of the people up for a vote at the next election date or when, when, when we may choose to do so. Uh, I would just like for all the commissioners to get their charter book out, start looking through it and find the things that they like, the things that they dislike. Maybe jot down some of the dislikes and the likes and the things. Then I would like to have an outside source, and I have looked, I don't want somebody in our backyard doing it. I want an outside source to look at the things. Let's have it drawn up, looked at, and hopefully maybe by the next election, we can make some changes to this charter that is long outdated. And, uh, I feel strong about that. There's a lot of things in that charter I don't like. But I heard a joke today that, uh, one of the rumors that got on the street real quick, but the guy that brought forward, it doesn't surprise me that this was brought up, that we were gonna make it to where we had a strong mayor. And that was the reason I put this on the board, on the agenda tonight. But I don't mean to show my ignorance, but I didn't even know what a strong mayor was. I thought it's not ours, he not that strong.
Man, I'm weak, I'm telling you.
So my only reasoning for bringing this up is I would like for over the next year, or however long it is till the next election, for us guys to be looking over the charter and kinda make notes of our likes and dislikes, and maybe a couple of months down the line, we can workshop and talk about it. But that's my only reason for putting it on the board tonight, and I just wanted to make the public, and you guys know, that's what, what the reason is on there.
Thank you. It is old and outdated.
The next item we have is a reference to a donation request from the Port St. Joe Varsity Cheerleaders. I don't know if she is here tonight.
Um, do they have something, this special event or something they're doing? I mean, I've always been for giving, but I'm.
T-shirts, things, just fundraising, things they're doing.
I'll make a motion that we give them a hundred and fifty dollars out of BP money.
Mayor might want me, Commissioner Thursday.
Yeah, I know you don't open a can of worms, but that's okay.
I'm on second for discussion.
Alright.
Hold on, we gotta, we gotta wait until Commissioner Thursday is second by Commissioner, is that it for discussion? Alright, let's go.
We're opening up a big can of worms to start with. Uh, my daughter was cheerleader, so I, I, you know, I feel for those, uh, girls and their families. But, uh, gosh, we got, we got key club and a baseball team and, and you name it. We, I just, you know, I, I, I feel for them, but I just don't think we can, I don't think we can open a can of worms and, and, uh, start something that I mean, we, we've got non-departmental things that, from the senior citizens of the Library Humane Society, that we backed off funding fully this year because we felt like we need to balance the budget. But, and, and so I don't feel like we can use money for something like this with cheerleaders, key club, baseball team, football, volleyball, Little League Baseball, what have you.
I feel this is something that shouldn't come to the city and ask, they should ask the merchants downtown and people like that. I know I'm buying that, through my company, and I'm sure a lot of other people are. Like I say, it is kinda open a can of worms if you do one.
And I agree with you guys one hundred percent, but I'm gonna tell you something, helping the children and the youth of our community is a can of worms I'm open, worth opening up. That's the only thing I have to say, and I had two children, girls, that were cheerleaders, and, uh, I paid my fair share of dues, but uh, seen the county give a lot of money year after year, and I always wanted to see the city be able to give a little bit. Right now, we do have a little bit. I don't think we can ever open up a can of worms and start giving five hundred dollar checks out, but while we got the money, when we can help a child out, our children out. Uh, children are my passion, and I'm, I'll stick to my emotion, whether it dies or doesn't.
Well, and I'll just add too, if, if the organization goes out and asks for money, they'll get it. I mean, I have not seen the cheerleaders stop by either of our hotels. And I've gotten at least a dozen requests from other sporting teams, and, and I've given to every one of them. So, I mean, I think if you just put in the time and go out and ask, uh, it will get funded, no question. The community does support their, their teams.
Commissioner Thursday, the, the op, one of the options, well, a few of the options are, well, between the one fifty.
Uh-huh.
You've got a one hundred dollar option.
Uh-huh.
You got a two fifty option, um, and I'd be in support with a, a one hundred dollar option.
I'm fine with that. I didn't even look at that part of it. I just wanted to help the, the kids out, so, uh, I'll amend my motion to a hundred dollars.
Mayor, I'm on with my second.
Alright, I'm with you, sir.
I'll say.
Second of Commissioner Larry. All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
No.
Motion passes three, two.
Uh, the last item we have on there tonight is the PDRB membership term. We have three membership terms expire in November. Uh, they are, uh, given three-year terms currently. The three that are up is, uh, your chairman, Jay Rish, uh, Rollis Leslie, and Mini Lightly. We did have a discussion with each of them, and if it's the wish of the board, they said they would like to continue on, but we wanna give you time to, to make a decision as to what you wanna do with your membership.
Um, yeah, I, I, I would like to hold off on making any decision on that. Uh, I would like to look at attendance. I mean, and make sure everyone is up for reappointment, has been attending the meetings, before I would make, maybe wanna make a decision.
I've been, I've been approached by a member of the community that might be interested in it as well, uh, I just.
So we need to advertise it, advertise the.
I don't, that'd be fair.
I mean, when we tend, if anybody wants to.
You gotta do that.
It is doing, yeah.
The ones that wanna stay, they continue to serve, that's.
Yeah, they've already said they want to, but if others come forward, it, it, I give a change.
Well, I've talked to.
Find volunteers, I can tell you that.
It is, but then we had that thing up to about ten people at one time, and every time I talked to somebody, they were complaining because we had too many people on there, so.
How many's on in there, Jim? Seven?
Seven, I guess.
I'm not saying that either.
You're just saying.
I'm not saying that either.
Right.
Just give it, somebody else might.
That, I'm, that's fine, I'm fine with that.
We did that, open it up and let the ones on their name, if they want, let them put their names in the hat, and anybody else that might want to, and then we'll.
I'm fine with that.
That's fair.
It is the PDRB.
Planning and Development Review Board, to meet the.
Like you want a variance or something on, around your house, build something that, you got to go to them to get the variance and things.
They meet once a month on the second Tuesday.
How would you submit beyond that quarter?
Uh, you can submit something to myself or Miss Pierce, we'll get your name in the hat. That's all I had to mention.
Alright, uh, you gonna take public works?
I can, yes, sir, please.
Okay. What's the update on that?
We have several projects going on in the community. Uh, we did, uh, Mr. Smallwood's gonna give you an update in a few minutes on the CDBG, I'll let him tell you that as to where we're at with that. Uh, we also have advertised for the materials for the alternate A and alternate B, which is tied into the CDBG, so that is out there for bid there. Uh, we are working on the Jones Homestead sewer, so, uh, Mr. Smallwood has got the plants prepared, and we're looking to get a letter out to all the, uh, uh, potential, uh, folks that could tie into that, so that project's going. Uh, we're also gonna try to get the sidewalks put in, finish those up on Avenue D in the next, uh, next week. And the boat ramp is moving along nicely too, so we're hoping to get those completed. A lot of projects going on.
You know, there's a lot of projects, but it works, that's for sure.
Jim, I, I can tell you, or, I've had a lot of, uh, response from Jones Homestead.
Good.
From that, that sewer project, so, I mean, um, and I think a lot of the, on that plantation drive area, and I'm, from what I've heard, and I, I haven't read this, but in their covenants and restrictions, it requires them, if it's available, to hook up. And, and, but, talking to them, I, I, I spoke to them, telling them about our workshop, that we're gonna try to plan probably middle October or so, so, um, maybe after, uh, maybe October, the first meeting in October, we'll say so.
Okay, alright, good deal. Yes, we're working on the letter to get out to all of them, to try to get interest. We need to find out how many folks are, are willing to tie in. The grant's for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It's not gonna cover to make it turn key, but we're gonna try to straighten it as far as we can by doing the work ourselves.
While we're on public works, I got one thing I wanna bring up, is I've had several people call me, and the, and I don't mean several, uh, half a dozen people call me in the last week or so about grass cutting, things being grown up. We've had a very rainy season. Our prison crews have gotten held in several times. So when we don't have that prison crew, we may not have it all cut in a timely manner, but we're all on top of it. I know our commissioner from District Four, Mr. Sandy Quinn's out there. Sometimes he gets his butt. Guys, we're not in control of who, and the wardens let out, or what day, or if a hurricane's coming. Everybody's a little bit behind right now, and I just asked everybody to be patient with us. We are trying, we are on top of it.
Yeah, I know, I asked Jim to reach out to DOT as well, because the ninety-eight right of ways are, are just overgrown. And I think from the county standpoint, uh, the county commissioners are reaching out to them as well, so. Keep your hands down, it makes it hard to hear. Sorry.
Alright, uh, Larry?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I just have one thing. Uh, on page ten of your agenda, we have a bid in for the renovation of clarifier number three. Uh, I'd like your, get your approval to accept the low bid, and this is a budgeted item.
We got the money in the budget, how much you got in the budget for that?
Yeah, we, we have a, yeah, covered.
Do we know anything about this company? Were we dealt with them before?
I hadn't, no, sir, I have not. We have talked with them, but no, we hadn't dealt with them.
References?
We have any references on them? I'm, I'm just looking at a lot of money.
Where are they located, Larry?
Yeah, but if you notice the rest of them, they're a lot higher, so.
Where's the company located, Larry, do you recall?
Sir, I've got the information.
Crystal County?
Yeah, I'll have it, I'll keep the information.
Do you think that's, that's, that's good to go?
Deal on it?
Yeah, like I said, we've talked, yeah, I think so. I think they do a good job.
As I.
One's about five thousand dollars more.
I mean, I've got a small suggestion, uh, and Larry, I don't know that I've actually presented it to you this way, but we've also got money in the budget next year to do the other clarifier. What if we held off till October to approve this bid and get a second bid, so that company can come out and do two tanks? Save some money on deployment cost. They can come out once and do both of them, if we waited till October, is that true?
How much do we budget there?
Not enough.
Uh, I believe you have roughly about sixty-five thousand in a specific line item. We had to pull it out of repair and maintenance from a different line item. But in this current year, I believe, Mr. Cor, we're about, we're about four or five thousand dollars short, so we'll have to pull it. We still have money within the fund, but not in that line item.
They might cut us a little bit.
That's what I'm saying, it just sounds silly to call them out and then have them rebid again in two weeks and come out and do another job. It's gonna cost them more money to do that. Let's get them to do both.
Go ahead and bid out two clarifiers.
Go ahead and bid one more time for a second clarifier, and if we're lucky, they'll both be the low bidder, and we get them out there at the same time.
You got seven companies there, there's, I bet it is.
How's that work?
Do we need to wait till the first, the budget year?
Let me ask you this, so clarification, was that to rebid it?
That's my question to you, would we just bid a second clarifier, or do a whole scrub this and do a whole new bid for two?
You could do it either way, I believe. What you were looking at, I don't believe you could just award a second one based on your current bid specs. But I think you could do that either way. You could say, okay, we could award this one and bid the other one out, or you could hold off and bid them both out, and we can encumber the funds for the, the following one.
I think what we maybe is reject these bids.
Just reject it and go out for two.
And then go out for two, yeah.
You could do that, and we can incumbent fund.
Are you comfortable with that, Larry, or is that?
Yeah, I just need to get them done.
I don't understand, well, they've been not done for a while now.
That's right, I've been hoping off on them for a while, because of money, and, and we gotta get it done.
I think we might get closer to our budget amount if we bid them as a package.
I'll make a motion to reject and then bid out.
Got a motion, Commissioner Larry, second of Commissioner, is that all in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Let's carry it, five a. Alright. Kevin's not around, you think?
No, but.
Ready to talk to Kevin?
He's, he's under the weather tonight, Mayor.
Can anybody give us an update on the grit kings, since the grit kings in the crowd tonight?
He said they were working.
Okay.
They're working, I don't know, we know. Alright, Mike?
Jim, uh, it's another one thing, uh, employer, the staffing levels back up, or we still advertise?
We have two positions that we are currently working on now. Uh, Kevin is working on a position, and so is the police chief, so we have two positions right now to be filled. They've closed, but they are working through the application process.
That's why I was asking, that's closed.
Close.
Alright, Mike?
Uh, Mayor, we're set for the final approval of the budget on, uh, next Tuesday, the twenty-sixth, is that correct?
Five oh one. And that's all.
Yes, sir.
Alright, anybody have any questions on Mike? Alright, thank you, Mike.
Five oh one.
City engineer, he's already up.
I had a few things tonight, um, so I tried to be brief, but, um, on the CDBG project, couple, last meeting two weeks ago, you voted, uh, award that to the low bidder on the base bid area contingent upon, uh, DEO agreeing with it, and so talked to Patrick Howard today. He's reviewing everything he needs to review and said move forward with the wardenet, so I'll get a notice award over to Mr. Anderson, and, um, we'll get contracts signed and bonds and insurance, and that paperwork will take two to three weeks. And so we'll start that process. Um, and then there's other paperwork that we're also filling out at the same time, forms that he needs. So all of that's moving forward. I don't have a start date for you yet, but, um, we're working towards getting a start date. We're getting closer, because that's where that is. Um, the Jones Homestead sewer, we submitted the permits to DEP, uh, last week. I expect within thirty days, we'll have that permit back from them. And then, um, like Mr. Anderson said, signups will be happening in the meantime, and then that'll, at some point, get under construction as well. That's kinda where we're at on that. Uh, Long Avenue, I think we're just waiting on the workshop to kinda go into detail on where we're at on Long Avenue and all that, so I don't have anything for that tonight. Uh, Long Avenue, I think we're just waiting on the workshop to kind of go into detail on where we're at on Long Avenue and all that, so I don't have anything for that tonight. Um, the boat ramp, I do have several things for you. Uh, that grant is set to expire at the end of this month, and, um, today, Mr. Anderson got verbal word from FWC, they're gonna give us a ninety-day extension on that to kind of finish out this project, maximize the grant funds like we've talked about. Um, some of those ideas, I just wanted to talk to you tonight about, throw them out there, because we hadn't really talked about any of them. Get your feel on it. Not you gotta vote on anything tonight, but just get your feel for it, and so, um, a couple of those things are potentially. Adding a sidewalk from, on the north side, from the, where the concrete ends now, adding it around to these two walkovers. Eight-foot wide concrete sidewalk to get that, to get that walk around to it. Um, there's a piece of concrete that's here, I kind of highlighted in blue. This is already in the contract to do, to tear out that area. It's got all the potholes in it, the drain, tear that out, redo that. There's a, a piece about twenty feet wide between what's in their contract and the top of the existing ramp that could use redoing. It's, it's functional, and that's about as best as it is. It's cracked up, torn up, it's been there a while. I would suggest doing that. Um. Another option, these step downs on the south side, the step downs on the wall in the dock, along that actual step down, add some of the rubber bumper along the length of it horizontally, just to keep folks from scratching up when they pull up to it, kind of a small dollar amount deal. Let me find my list, there's one more, I think. Oh, and then, if you wanted to replace any rip wrap, you know, we could certainly do that, and so, um, if I had to choose which side to replace any of the rip wrap, we talked about, uh, it's probably been months ago now, but it was mentioned a couple of times about the concrete rubble, replacing it with some granite rip wrap, maybe it'd make it look better. If you're gonna go that option, I would stick to the north side on that. I would stick to that side. I don't think I would mess with that south jitty at all, just the way it's constructed, the way it's put in. I think we'd do a lot more damage there than, than good. Um, so if that's an option, you wanted to go that route, certainly that would be an option, but, um, oh, and then the conduits, that was the other thing, getting the electrical conduits put in from, you know, the power poles over to where the future lights will be down by the ramp, so those are, those are things that I would throw out there. That we've got prices on all of that, all of that can be done with the money that's left. Um, if there's any ideas you have that we need to price, if we haven't priced pros and cons to any of that, like I said, you don't have to make any decisions tonight. I can meet any of you, you know, down there individually and go over it, if you want to see it, kind of what we're talking about. But that's kind of where we're at, so, um, to finish it out over the next ninety days, we need some direction on any of these options, or any other options you have, and then we need to talk about, um, to finish that concrete work, we need to close that ramp, and so we need to talk about when that makes sense to close.
Right.
Um, how do we get that word out, let people know, hey, it's gonna be closed? I think, I think three weeks is what we need.
Three weeks?
Yes, sir. It's, it's, concrete has to cure, and the longer cure time you have, the better we are, and the better it'll be, and so, um, it'll probably take a week to tear it out, form it up, and to pour it, and then, you know, a couple of weeks of cure time.
There's no way to pour two slabs?
You can, you're still going at some point, have to, um, close the whole thing. You can probably do half, the first half, and keep half of it open, but when you go to do the other half, you're not gonna have room to turn around at the end, and so, yeah.
Um, Clay.
They've done a great job, you know, keeping it open.
Yeah, they have, and I, I mean, I, I, they had talked about closing this thing in the summertime, and I talked to Clay, and I agreed, hey, let's just hold off until at least winter time. Uh, I wasn't aware it was gonna be three weeks, but sometimes it is what it is. Clay, are you saying these options that we have on the board tonight, how much money do we have left?
It was right at one oh one, hundred and one thousand.
So, how much of this stuff that, could we get done with a hundred and one thousand? You think we can get some, all, part?
So we've got prices on everything I've told you about.
Uh-huh.
The conduit, and I've got breakdowns on all this, but, um, conduit, um, the sidewalk on the north side, replacing this concrete and the rub rail, and then doing a rip wrap from here, replacing a rip wrap from here, down to that second walkover, and all of that, you can afford to do for the hundred and one.
Uh, I like that idea. It's, it, what do y'all feel about that?
My main thing was to, you know, get that repaved right there in the front, and, and have some adequate lighting down there. That's, that were my two main things, um, when I heard about the extra money, so.
So if we can get it all done, I think everybody'd be happy.
Yep.
I make a motion that we let you loose on it. Do you want us to do that now, or you don't need it, or?
Let us, that's good for tonight, let us do this. Let me go back to FWC, this one, you know, tomorrow, and say, here's how we want to spend the rest of the money, make sure they're cool with it, and then in two weeks, we come back with that, and we'll change it, and you can vote on it.
Uh-huh. And get an okay first. That's fine.
All right.
Okay. That was it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
That's it?
That's it.
Anything else for Clay?
That's great.
Thank you, Clay, for that, thanks. Code Enforcement, everybody look, catch a sheet, Richy sends us reports every week for what he's doing. Police Department.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I don't have anything on the agenda tonight.
Unless the board asks questions for me?
One. Can you please get DOT down here, and see if we can work on First Street, making the roads the same on both sides, before it's turning left, in lane, turns left, you don't want to go, you know, the, this side is opposite from the other side.
Right. There's an extra lane on the other side?
It doesn't even have a turn signal. Doesn't have one.
Okay.
Before you turn, you know, left, like the other one does. And, and I don't know any reason why they wouldn't put it up.
We can find out why they did it and find out if they can change it.
Please. I can tell you one other issue, I, I mean, it appears to be an issue to me, uh, with the golf cart crossing. The, there's only two sides of where the golf carts, the signs are, actually, and you would think they'd be on the.
On the other side.
We thought the same thing when we saw it come across. We thought it was a mistake, but that's, that's the way they approved it.
We were actually kind of disturbed by that, because it doesn't, it doesn't notify the right traffic.
We can go above and beyond the requirements, though, right? We could put them up.
I don't, I don't know. We have to have DOT permission to put a sign on there?
Let us tell them right away.
Don't tell them, I think it needs.
Makes sense.
It, 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 I agree, there's not enough signage there, it's accident waiting.
All right, anything else for the chief?
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Charlotte?
Yes, sir. Uh, when each of you arrived tonight, you should have had a reminder on your microphone of opening road, what your day, your time. We'll be doing that Wednesday and Thursday, and follow up with what Mr. Lacour said on the budget workshop. That's five oh one in this building, not at City Hall, but here, next Tuesday. That's all I have, sir.
Uh, I have one question.
Yes, sir.
Can you tell me, who all are the members of the Historical Society Board?
Uh, yes, sir, I believe Mr. Thursby requested that earlier today, and asked that it be put in your box.
Okay.
And there's a list in each of your boxes.
Okay.
Um, can you go ahead and give it to us now, off the top of your head, while we're all here together?
Well, I could get most of them, but maybe not all of them.
All right, go ahead and try.
We have twenty, uh, we were a government, we were.
You have twenty-something of them?
By a ju- a quasi-judicial board back in the fifties. We have a, we have a slot for twenty-five, I think we currently have twenty-four on our records, but.
I didn't realize you had that many. We'll just get it out of our box. I understand that. I thought you had six or eight, so, all right, just, we'll get it out of our box, forget what I, yeah, never mind.
All right, anything else for Charlotte?
That's it, sir.
I'm done, sir. All right. Citizens to be heard. Anyone who wishes to be heard in the audience, please come up.
Good evening, Christie McElroy, Woodward Avenue, Port St. Joe. I know at the last meeting, last Thursday, for, um, the budget, you, um, voted for the budget to be approved. That would include the four hundred and twenty percent salary increase, uh, of monthly pay. So, just to kind of review some of these facts, and then also kind of put a little bit more context about what this means. So, four hundred and twenty percent salary increase per commissioner equals twelve thousand dollars. And then you also will continue to get your seven hundred and five dollars per month for health insurance. Several of you commissioners as well receive cell phone compensation, I believe, but I didn't include the cell phone or other benefits, just the healthcare and the salary. And that equates to twenty thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars. So, what that means is, for the budget, for a year, it's a hundred and two thousand, three hundred dollars, taxpayer dollars. In Port St. Joe, we have fourteen hundred and two households. So if you were to break down that annual number, big number of a hundred and two, that means each household, for one time in a year, would pay seventy-two dollars and ninety-seven cents. Think about that. Seventy-two dollars and ninety-seven cents. The population is roughly three thousand, four hundred folks. Thirteen percent of the families in Port St. Joe, thirteen percent, are below the poverty line. So what would seventy-two dollars and ninety-seven cents mean for them? Groceries, water, the basic necessities. Career source in one of the latest Star articles, uh, stated, the executive director stated, from July first, two thousand and sixteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen, in Port St. Joe, a hundred and eighty families and four hundred and eighty individuals were served through the food pantry per month. That's a lot. Out of those fourteen hundred and two households, twenty-eight point eight percent of those folks have children below eighteen. So, just looking at the timelines and information, Commissioner Lowry was the one that requested this salary increase in the current budget. And then Commissioner Thursby and Commissioner, and Mayor Patterson agreed that they deserved an increase. So Commissioner Thursby said, he represents the people and do, will do what the people want. Mayor Patterson said he will listen to decreasing the four hundred and twenty percent salary increase. After a number of public meetings to discuss this, there was not one person that came here to this podium, or any of the podiums, and said that y'all deserved a four hundred and twenty percent salary increase. However, you did have many taxpayers and citizens say, yes, we support you getting a increase in salary, but not anything close to that. You asked Mike Lacour to model that out, and he did. So, I think that we kind of need to look at this. If you're going to listen to the people and consider lowering it based off of the people's voices, and you are for the people, and not one person said you deserve a salary increase of four hundred and twenty percent, and the amount of poverty we have, and what could be done, I think we need to look at the actions. And some of the things that happened in these meetings became not very kind, very unkind.
Ms. Christie, Ms. McElroy, you're taking a lot of time.
I, I realize.
Talking about things that's already been talked about.
Yes, sir, and.
And, and, I, let me finish.
Yes, sir.
I understand where you're coming from, but I'll say this. Out of all this time, with all the fuss that was made, with all the stuff that was in the paper, not one person has called me on the phone, not one person has texted me, not one person has talked me on the street to say, don't get a race.
That's, and, and that is.
They should have called me, is what I'm getting at. I should have, my phone should have been blowing off the hook, but it didn't, not one time, not once. I've heard three people, really, I mean, this is being honest, I've had three people complain about this race. You were one, and you know who the other two are.
And that, that isn't accurate, Mayor.
What I'm saying is, we're not gonna sit here and let you just keep bashing us over this issue. I mean, state what you want to say, and then you'll have to sit down, yes, ma'am.
Mayor, I'm not bashing you. Excuse me.
I'm gonna give you three more minutes.
Excuse me.
Three more minutes, gentlemen, do y'all agree with that?
Yes.
Does anybody not agree?
Excuse me.
Does anybody not agree? I'll give you three more minutes, Ms. McElroy.
I, yeah, I'll, I'll be happy to take the three minutes, and I'm almost finished, but the interesting thing at this, the last meeting where you approved the policy, Mayor, is Commissioner Thursby put the motion on the table, he couldn't get a second, until.
He got a second?
Yeah, when you passed the chairmanship over to Commissioner Lowry.
And then we voted to approve the budget as presented, five oh.
But the.
Five oh, not three, two.
But the interest.
Five to zero. That means everybody approved the budget as presented.
The budget, but not, but not that compensation.
After that vote, after that vote.
Mayor, you're, you're taking away my three minutes. You are interrupting, and this goes back to your anger issues.
Lady, you had a problem this week with anger management. I've te- heard about it all over town. You chastised some people, a little, a nice little miscosted.
Let me tell you.
Don't tell me about anger management, please, are you, finish your three minutes in your three, okay?
Listen, listen.
I'm trying to be nice.
Listen, you are trying to pass the buck over to me.
I'm fixing to put you back out, if you don't, get your head and talk what you want to say about the budget.
You know what, Ms. Charlotte, is that plugged in, because I want to make sure that you see how this mayor speaks, not only to me, but to others.
I don't understand where you're coming from, Ms. Christie, is that you don't like me because I didn't vote with you one time, okay?
That isn't.
Let the truth be known.
What, what are you, what are you saying, Mayor? I mean, I don't.
I'm saying the truth, Ms. Ms. McElroy, I'm telling you the truth.
About what?
About why you don't like me. You used to like me a lot at the first, but now you don't.
You're right, Mayor, I did.
Because I didn't vote with you.
I did, you didn't vo- I didn't vote for you, with you, for what?
The county wanted to send money out there to.
No, sir.
And I didn't vote, and what did you tell me that day?
No, sir.
What'd you say that day? You counseled your pest control, you called my secretary, you were working on the workforce board, and you would get her a better job.
Listen, I, I can certainly.
And she deserved to work for somebody better than me. That's exactly what you said.
You know what, if you, if you would like to go there, I can also read everyone the letter that I wrote you that was very nice about me having to let you go, and why I had to let you go, because you billed me for a service that you did not provide.
Listen, that's not true, that's not true.
Yes, it is.
You're the one who counseled the pest control.
Yes, it is.
Very hard to get set up, you're very hard to get set up. So listen, let's not, talk about what you want to talk to you, if you're still with through, Ms. McElroy.
You, you chart. Okay, and at, at the EDC meeting in August, you also sat there and screamed at me, and it was in a public record. For no reason, unprovoked, so it's not me.
Oh, there was a reason, I won't go into the reason, what you did.
Oh, my gosh.
You know what you did.
What did I do?
I'm not gonna say it again, you know. Now, Jim, if I had to keep listening to this, chief.
For ten more seconds, Mayor.
I asked her.
He keeps interrupting me.
And she just wants to bash me. That's all she wants to do, is bash me.
How, how, how am I bashing you? How am I bashing you, Mayor, honestly?
Your time is up. Three minutes is up, I'm sorry.
No, you took my three minutes, and I, I am going to finish my three minutes. That's the right thing to do.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn this meeting.
Second?
All right, motion adjourned.